Good evening. I'll call this meeting of the Cartersville City Council to order. If you'll please stand for our invocation and pledge.
Reverend. My dear gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the opportunity to come here and do the business of the city, and for those who have put in the work so that we can have this meeting. We thank you for them. Thank for our staff, our city staff, and all the work that they do day-to-day. We ask a special blessing on them. That you would continue to watch over our city and continue to give us safety in our public works and in our public safety, and that you would continue to watch over those who work diligently each and every day. Be with us now, and may everything that's done here be worth fighting. It's in your holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Do you want me to pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Olmeyer, the roll please.
I thought you were doing the pledge, but you couldn't wait your second.
Gary Cott, Ward 1.
Here.
Jason Dent, Ward 2.
Here.
Rob, Ward 2.
Here.
John McCoon, Ward 4.
Here.
Gary Crock, Ward 5.
Here.
Pat Rayne, Ward 6.
Amen.
Thank you, Mayor. The first order of business is the approval of our meeting minutes from September the 20th, and council, you've had an opportunity to review that document, and that would be the opportunity to make any corrections to that. If there are none, a motion would be in order. Motion to approve.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Manino, why don't you get us started on case file SU-18-05.
Thank you, Mayor and council. This is a second reading, and the request is for a special use permit to allow for residential above and behind commercial use. The property is already a zone commercial, general commercial, and office commercial, and in our ordinance to have the residential element for a true mixed-use development. It does require the special use permit. It did go to the Planning Commission. Planning Commission did recommend approval with a condition which we had discussed at the previous meeting and in the work session regarding an eight-foot masonry wall adjacent to the Point North subdivision, approximately 780, 800 feet. That has not been resolved, however, if you choose to approve the proposed request, it could be subject to staff reviewing final fencing details and location. Additionally, at the previous meeting, we also distributed a letter of opposition that y'all got that had some concerns with parking and stormwater and so forth. With that, again, Planning Commission did recommend approval with condition, and no other additions or changes since the first reading.
And I know that at our first reading, there was some discussion about staff getting together with the developer to talk about different fence options. Is that something to look at? Has there been any headway in that?
Yeah, and they did propose, and they did have this actually at the last meeting, different types of fence, fence styles and so forth. The biggest concern was with the actual location of the gas line that runs along the rear property line, along Point North subdivision. They could not, without it being field-located, could not specifically decide or locate the exact location where the fence would be.
So it's safe to say if this, tonight, if it happened to be moving forward, the process would be to get a field locate on that, on that gas line, and then start working with the gas department and planning and development to come up with a fence that's going to be located in there that's not going to run through a drainage ditch or a detention pond, and then also something that's aesthetically appropriate for both the developer and for planning and development?
That would be correct.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions or items for Randy at this time? Thank you, sir. I'll open up a public hearing relative to case file SU-18-05. Anybody wishing to step forward and speak for or against may do so at this time. And if you would please, sir, state your name and your address for our clerk.
My name is Dean Bagwell. I reside at 1043 Cass White Road, Cartersville. It is in the county. I'm here representing the Barto County Farm Bureau Federation, which owns the building there that is adjacent to this. This is a membership organization. Most everybody thinks of Farm Bureau as the insurance, but that's just one of the services that we offer. We are a member of the Georgia Farm Bureau. So our concerns is the parking, privacy. There's nothing there, barrier behind our building that I've been aware of. They're going to add parking out there on the street that we, without redoing that street, we know, we're wondering how that's going to impact our business, our customers coming in. Right now, the street up to the car wash is about four to six foot elevated. From our building to the street is about three foot elevation. That's where we're concerned about the water runoff, but if they redesign the road, then that probably will change. We are concerned about having the additional residencies there. I understand that they have about 100 more parking spaces required than what is required by the ordinances, but knowing me, like everybody else, when I go to the mall, I park close to where I'm going. I feel like people will be parking in our parking lot in front of the building to go to those businesses on that end, especially if it gets crowded. We operate 8:30 to 5:00. We have the minimum number of spaces that was required when we built there 14 years ago. We own 85% of that building, and we have about eight employees in the Farm Bureau. We've leased out two suites. They each have four parking spaces each for those two suites. So it gets kind of tied in there at times. We do have a night deposit for people who want to pay their bills after hours to come in there, so closing the parking lot after hours is not an option. We feel like probably with all this additional residential stuff that it will probably devalue our property as far as commercial, and so that's primarily our concerns, and I do appreciate y'all working with us. I do farm for a living, so I don't go to that office, but maybe once a month. That's why I apologize for not being, getting any notification into you at the planning board or at the last meeting because my hours are, I tell everybody I work 8:25, so I never stop working. But I do appreciate your consideration, and if you have any questions, I'll try to address those.
Questions? I have a question for you, Mr. Manino. How do you feel that that development would devalue your property?
If it doesn't go forth with the condominiums, is there any provision in there that will keep it from going to apartments? And we feel like that the price range, you know, may not be the attractive part to certain clientele, especially if it goes to, if it's not prevented from being apartments.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you for your comments, sir. Thanks for being here. Again, this is a public hearing for case file SU-18-05, and anybody wishing to step forward, speak for or against, may do so at this time. And seeing none, I will close that public hearing, and we will take this up with councils. There further discussion, any kind of clarification, anything else you need from staff? And I do know that the developer is here as well, if you've got questions for them as well.
Just clarity for Randy. I mean, this will go through the planning and development process with city staff, and as far as runoff, flooding, things of that sort of concerns, those will be addressed, right?
Yeah, it will be reviewed and approved and designed in accordance with the city development regulations.
And then regards to parking, they need to make sure that they've got enough parking, which I know by, they say this here, but when they actually come to you guys, you will still, there's still requirements they have to meet.
Yeah, this is still conceptual. The actual design has not occurred, and they would have to meet a minimum standard. Right now, what they're showing is, you know, 80 to 100 spaces over that minimum standard. They're actually including parking structures where you'll be parking under buildings, so all, so there's...
I can't remember if we spoke during the meeting or during the work session prior to last meeting about, about the ownership being condominiums versus apartments.
I believe we had heard that they anticipated the majority of it to be owner-occupied, however, when you have, and again, I can't speak for the developer, but when you have condos for sale, you're going to have a certain percentage that will end up rental, just like in every neighborhood. You're going to have houses that end up rental.
Is it within our authority, and I think this is where we went last time, is it within the city's authority to restrict the amount of rentals versus occupied owners to a certain percentage?
I don't know that you would want to do that, but...
I don't know that we want to either. I'm just kind of, I mean, that'd be a, no problem for me. I'm sure it'd be a huge problem for y'all to try to delve into that administratively. I'm just...
There are processes where you might be able to do that. None of those are currently in place in any of the city codes that would allow you to do it with respect to this property. I will state to you also that there's been discussions on apartments versus condominiums. From the city's point of view, as reviewing plans, there is a big difference over whether something is an apartment complex or whether it's a condominium. If it's an apartment complex, the city's 100% in charge of the review of the design, the layout, and everything else, and stormwater, and everything associated with it. If they actually come to the city and decide they want to condominium this property, the city does not have the same level of control over a condominium plat process that we do over a non-condominium. State law basically says these are the minimum requirements for a condominium. As long as you follow those requirements, meet those requirements, you may subdivide or plat the property however you want to. Now, that doesn't mean they still don't have to comply with stormwater, you know, street and road accesses, but as a condominium complex, it is more up to the developer to decide what to do within the property, and the city's not as involved as much.
So these numbers that we have in here, say for residential unit summary about the minimum square footage, is that for an apartment or is that for a condo?
From my understanding, it is for a condo, however, again, from what I thought, I'd heard the developer say that they're going to condo it, but usually there are a certain number that do end up rental.
Well, I mean, there's nothing to stop me from buying one of them and running rent.
Again, that's...
Correct.
Yeah. But when you're, when you, to me, when you think about building a condo, it's a different concept to me than, say, an apartment.
Well, let's hear it right from the man. Again, your name and address for our clerk, please, again, sir.
My name is Baja Karasmi. I'm the developer at 1136 and 1138 North Tennessee Street. As far as the condominium, I'd like to clarify, initially, they will be sold up to 25%, no more, as investors to be able to buy and rent. 75% will be owners. And if you are familiar with condo association, they generally reduce that number over the years. In other words, if any number of those investor units are sold, then they take the rental privilege away. Ultimately, this will all be in the condominium association. The best association will run at 85% to 90% ownership, and that would probably be indicated in the condominium association.
Okay. Thank you.
Sir, if you don't mind clarifying one other thing for me as well. In regards to the fencing that the planning and development suggested, the law, the fence, however you want to coin it, you are understanding fully that this still has to go back through them, and you're going to have to agree on where that should actually be placed?
Yes, we talked about it. I mentioned masonry is going to be out of question because of the cost and what it represents, you know. There is a 10-foot easement agreement right now, so we still have enough room in the 20-foot easement agreement to place a fence for the privacy. Our property sets four to six foot higher than the houses behind us, so I will be working with the city to see what is the best height and the best type of fences that we can put in there. Yes, I, I mean, obviously, if we agree on something, we will go. If not, then... It's already suggested that, you know, if we do office condominium as is, we can go ahead and put a fence in there and operate. So, I mean, it's approved with a fence. And one point I have, that for the traffic, it's already approved for office condominiums. I mean, for office condominiums, for every thousand square foot, you're going to have four to six cars. For a home, you're going to have one or two. So it's going to be a lot less traffic this way than it would be if it's all built as business professional office condos. So I think it'll be a great project. I think that it will be a landmark for Cartersville.
Will the fence also go behind the Farm Bureau building?
Our fence, no. That's not our property, so it will be, if I may walk over there...
Please, yes.
Our fence should start from here. The office building, well, it should start from here and somewhere along the line, probably come inside this mansion, probably go over...
So it won't come up behind that building on your property line?
Behind this building?
Yes.
No, this property doesn't belong to us? This is the Farm Bureau building?
I think what he's asking, would your fence run along the back line of the Farm Bureau building?
Well, it will stop wherever the setback is.
Okay.
So...
Randy, could you take him up there and show him what we're talking about, and just ask him if he plans for the fence to go there or not?
We were planning on landscaping it nicely, but they want the fence, so we put a fence...
Okay. So what I, what I think I heard you say, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but you're open to working with the city and the Farm Bureau folks to come up with something that's agreeable to both?
Sure.
Okay.
Sure, and one more thing I'd like to mention to Farm Bureau. One, there is no water running to his property from our car wash per se right now. And if we do any improvement, you know, Kevin Stevenson is our civil engineer, and he resides, actually, I talked with him. I said, "How come there is no catch basin in your property?" He said, "Well, when they developed it, there's just a outlet which goes right next to the Farm Bureau house." And I talked with him. I said, "Maybe when we're developing that part of the community, and if you guys are agreeable, I can run a catch basin and tie it into my stormwater and run it out, so you guys won't even have that problem."
Okay. All right. Gary, you have another question, sir?
In your original condo documents, when you formulate them, are you going to have a rental restriction in there?
Definitely.
In that original, 25%?
Yes, that will be the max to start. As I said, that reduces over the years. Once association takes over, they really like less rentals too. A minimum rental period is going to be one year.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? Anyone else?
Mayor, if you don't mind, I have a question, but it's of Mr. Bagwell.
Okay.
Thank you.
Connor, could you put up the drawing of their proposal? Dean?
Yes, sir.
You see where they have the proposed parking adjacent to your, your building on there? If you had your druthers, where would you want that to stop along that road? And you can walk over there and show us.
Probably at this corner.
Okay.
Way onto the edge of the street. That's why I think the street's being changed. Our corner is probably a few foot or so off of the current street. And when we built there, there was no street through here. There's some dispute as to whether it's a private road or a state, or a city road. The city did come out and try to help us. He said, "There's no runoff." There is no runoff from the car wash. It's when we get excessive rain. Like I said, there's a six-foot rock, and his ankle going into the car wash comes right straight into our drive. So when we have excessive rain, it comes right down and right across the road into our parking lot. And we, we have a hitch, like, or, we have an accident. Now, looking up for a clarification, he mentioned that he had talked with Farm Bureau. He has not been in contact with me. He may have been in contact with the office, but the office is just a, there again, the insurance is just a service. They're there every day. Nothing can be done with the Farm Bureau that doesn't go through our nine board of directors. So that's not been discussed with us.
So from what I gathered from what you said, Mr. Bagwell, you're fine with their parking on the road south of where your back property line there is?
Yes, sir.
So you just would not like any parking on the road north of that?
And that, and...
I may have the directions wrong, but y'all know what I'm talking about.
And, 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 you know, again, I'm, we're afraid that people coming in, going to shop there, they're going to stop and pull in hours because they may not, if that gets full in front of that proposed thing, they're not going to walk back down here to the parking deck. They're going to park where the closest looking available space is. So that's, that's our concern with the parking. There will be no way to govern who comes into our parking area.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else have questions or any further discussion? And seeing none, chair will entertain a motion if there's one forthcoming from council.
I would. I'd like to make a motion to move forward with this annexation request subject to staff approval.
The special use request?
Special use request, subject to staff approval for the design and location of the sun, and in accordance with where the gas line is.
Fence.
You mean a fence?
Yeah, fence.
I'll second.
Okay. So you've got a motion and a second. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, Mr. Sanders.
Thank you, Mayor, council. This item is our FYI 2019 Local Maintenance Improvement Grant. We generally use this money for resurfacing. We put out bids for the resurfacing contract, and Barto Pavin was the low bidder at $261,335.23. It's a budgeted item, and we are requesting permission for the mayor to sign the contract and any other related documents.
All right. Any discussion, and if not, a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, Tommy.
The next item is a second reading of the ordinance for the FEMA revisions to our flood ordinance, and there's been no changes since the first reading.
Okay. Questions, comments, or motions?
And just so we're clear, Tommy, Tommy, there's no additional fees or burdens placed on the developers with this, correct?
That's, that's correct.
Yes.
Well, we, the way we interpret and enforce our, our ordinance will not change based on these revisions. These revisions are just some clarifications that basically support the, the way we were already interpreting.
Right. Thank you.
Yes.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Another second.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Mr. Sanders. Chief Carter, you've got the next couple, I believe.
Good evening, Mayor and council. This is the second reading for a hazardous materials emergency, potential fees and charges due to cause of beyond normal nature. There's been no changes since our first reading.
Okay. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, please, chief.
Yes, sir. In 2000, the city of Cartersville and Barto County, they went into an automatic aid agreement for fire protection and other emergency responses between the two fire departments. In 2015, there was an extensive review and revision at that point in time of the automatic aid agreement. With the passing of the previous ordinance that you just voted in, Title V or Section V of the automatic aid agreement deals with compensation, which turns back into, it's only really used once FEMA comes in, if we have a disaster, to allow us to recover. We're asking for a change to the automatic aid agreement that would take in now the hazardous materials ordinance change that we just made. This particular automatic aid agreement has already been heard by the county and was also approved this week.
Any discussion on this item? If there's not, a motion's in order.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Porta.
Yes, Mayor, I have a agreement with Speedway LLC for a construction agreement. We have a fiber optic cable along Highway 411, and there's a new gas station they're going to be placing there. We've got an agreement to, for them to pay the cost for relocating that, $6,454. I recommend approval of this.
Any discussion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Say.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, please, Dan.
Next item is the One Beacon Insurance Deductible. We have a couple outstanding claims from our prior insurance carrier. The deductible to that is $7,020.01. I recommend approval of this invoice.
Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Last one for you, Dan.
Yes, sir. Traveler's Insurance is reimbursing us $11,815.32 in estimated damage on a police vehicle that's involved an accident. Currently, car is currently in shop at Matthew's Garage. Our cost of that is a deductible of $1,000, but I recommend approval when Matthew's Garage invoice, when it comes in, to pay them for this reimbursement.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions, and if not, a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Mr. Hassbrook.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council. I'm bringing you a request to renew our Itron meter and software. This will renew the software and the maintenance support. This is, this is software that we use to remotely collect data from our larger customers, and we use it for billing information. And it is a sole source because this is, this is the equipment we decided on years ago, so it's sole source. And the amount of the annual agreement is $11,215.33.
Okay. Any discussion? If not, a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next one for you, Don.
Okay, the, these are good problems to have. We requesting to purchase a 300 KVA transformer to replace the one we moved to Chick-fil-A during the construction project, so we're just renewing our inventory of transformers is what we're, what we're doing. And we put this out for bid. We get, we received four bids, and we're, we're asking council to approve the low-cost price per unit and total ownership cost from Ermco, and the unit price is $8,625.
Okay. Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. That's for you.
Okay. We need to purchase a 500 KVA transformer, and this is a little more costly, so we went to the statewide bid, and we received approximately six bids, and we're asking council to approve the, the low-cost bid for the price per unit and total ownership cost was the lowest amount. And this was GE Transformer, and the unit price is $11,864, and we're asking council to authorize a purchase of that transformer. And all these items, I just wanted to mention, all these items are budgeted capital items, so we, we try to foresee this coming, so part of doing business.
Well, quite honestly, I wouldn't mind you buying transformers every meeting because that means we've sold the one we got to stock to somebody. We're continuing to get customers, so...
Yes, the business is rather robust in Cartersville right now, so it's a good sign.
Very good. Any other discussion, if not, a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Don.
Thank you.
Mr. Lovell, you have the next item, please.
Yes, Mayor. If y'all recall, at the last council meeting, y'all ordered a bid related to the, some valves that are needed for the Transco Pipeline Project. Once we informed the low bidder that they had won the bid, they then informed the city that they had mistabulated their bid and asked if we would not require them to honor it. They said they did not actually understand the types of valves we were apparently requesting. The city staff reviewed their request, decided that we did not want to force them to honor their bid. They were not able to comply with it, and it occurred to us that other companies involved in the bidding may have had some confusion as well as to the valves they were bidding on at that time. So we decided to rebid the project. Because of that decision to rebid, which... Because of that decision to rebid, which Mr. Hill will tell y'all about on the next item, I'm asking y'all to rescind the previous acceptance of the low bidder at the last meeting.
Okay, chair will entertain a motion to rescind that bid.
Make a motion to rescind.
Second.
All in favor to cap by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Keith. Mr. Hill.
Evening, Mayor, members of the council, we did rebid that, we had gotten two bids back, the winning bid was from Consolidated Pipe and Supply Company, excuse me, the bid total was $39,152, and it actually consolidated, knocked like $250 off each valve from what they had bid previously, but they were the low bidder.
Okay.
It is a budgeted item, this is for the Transco project.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to cap by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jones.
We've only got one tonight, Bob, you feeling okay?
Uh, you know, it's an off night, and I figured I'd give you a break. What we have tonight is our annual blanket purchase order for chemicals used in the water and wastewater treatment plants, we do this as a means of trimming down future agendas, as if we didn't do this, I would have probably a minimum of two or three items just related to chemicals at virtually every meeting. So we put this out for bid, received pricing on individual chemicals, you see the summary of that in unit prices before you, would recommend approval, and would add to that we did see some prices go up, we did see some go down, but we think that the net change will be within the budgeted amount for each plant, so we don't expect this to cause any issue from a budget standpoint.
Great, thank you. Any questions, and if not, a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to cap by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Anderson.
Yes, sir, Mayor and council, we accepted quotes for a custom pool cover for Aubrey Street Pool, we had planned to use our existing one, but it was several years old and was not worth it by the time we had to reinstall the, the hooks, but we recommend the, the low bid from Wilson Pool in the amount of $5,200, this is a budgeted item, paid for out of our maintenance and operation budget.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to cap by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Uh, second item is, we took quotes for construction material for buildings at Hicks Park in the Cartersville Sports Complex, including one concession building and five press boxes, this is a budgeted item, recommend the low bid from 84 Lumber in the amount of $8,008.39. Also note on this, this is to be paid for out of outdoor maintenance and operation budget, not, not the GO bond fund.
Okay, did you mention who is doing that work?
Uh, I did in the work session, I did, I have not here, but that work is being, we have contracted the, the Floyd County Prison, especially, they have specialty crews, so they are coming in and doing, they're repainting our exterior of the Senior Aquatic Center, and they're doing the construction of this material that we're purchasing tonight, doing the installation of that.
Okay, that's what I thought I'd heard in the work session, I was...
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any other discussion? If not, a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to cap by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Last one for you, Greg.
Yes, sir, Mayor, this is a change order in September of 17, council approved the construction contract for our Phase Two recreational buildings, which included the Aubrey Street Bath House, Cartersville and Hicks Park Sports Complex restrooms, and the women's expansion of the Senior Aquatic Center. At that time, the bid amount was $1,360,495, we had 11 change orders during this project, they turned out in our favor of $4,277, and I recommend the final closeout number of this project for $1,356,000, 200, $1,356,218, thank you.
Say it again?
I...
I'm just kidding, I'm just, we've got to, we got to, any discussion? I will mention, I know Walmec Lewis and Smith did most, if not all, of that, and did a fantastic job, and it's a sore surprise for us out there, and they did a great job.
Well, I'm very pleased with, with the, with Walmec Lewis and Smith, they did everything they said they were going to do, and I, I agree with you, we've had a lot, nothing but compliments on, on, on our, on our buildings.
Great. Any other discussion, if not, a motion?
Motion to approve the closeout.
I'll second that.
All in favor to cap by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Lovell, you're going to handle the, the next item, but before we do that, I do want to add an item to the agenda, so chair will entertain a motion to add that item.
Motion to add. Second.
All in favor to cap by saying aye?
Aye.
Item's added, we'll get to that after Mr. Lovell, and this right away, deed of dedication.
Thank you, sir, this is a standard, I did a dedication for Wingfoot Park, Phase Two D2, where the city accepts that they've given us letter of credits and bonds with respect to the road and stormwater and utilities out there, it is recommended by staff for your approval.
Any discussion? If not, a motion.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
All in favor to cap by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Ms. Brock.
Yes, Mayor and council, upon the gas department superintendent Gary Riggs' retirement, I would like to recommend to council that Michael Hill be named interim superintendent of the gas department.
Okay, any discussion? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to cap by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. And Mr. Reinhardt, you've got our final item, you and Mr. Hass Brock back there looking at your watch like you got somewhere to be, so I guess you'll go through this pretty quickly, huh? I'll be separate to y'all back there.
He wanted me to keep him brief, bro, I told him I was going to fix it all.
Don't let him cut into your airtime like that.
Honorable Mayor and council, we'll be looking at the July 2018 and comparing to July 2017 financial report, and the general fund revenues decreased by $206,000, and the expenses decreased by $799,000. If you remember, this time last year, we were in the middle of purchasing a fire truck. Two areas of revenue that I look at on a monthly basis, local office and sales tax, we have a slight increase there of about $53,000, and the billing permits and inspection fees have an increase here of about $5,000. In the water and sewer fund, revenues increased over last July by $342,000, while expenses increased by $266,000, and this increase is due to increased debt service expense coupled with decreased personnel expense, decreased operating expense, and decreased capital expenses. In the gas fund, revenues increased over last year by $213,000, expenses decreased by $77,000, this is due to decreased personnel expenses, decreased operating expenses, decreased cost of purchasing gas, I'm sorry, purchased gas, and decreased capital expenses. In the electric fund, revenues increased over last year by $199,000, expenses decreased by $74,000, this is due mainly to decreased personnel expense, decreased operating expense, decreased cost of purchasing electricity, and this is coupled with increased capital expenses. In the stormwater fund, revenues increased over last July by $1,000, expenses increased by $49,000, this is due mainly to decreased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, and increased capital expenses. In the solid waste fund, revenues increased from last year by $6,000, and expenses decreased by $12,000, this is due to decreased personnel expenses and increased operating expenses. And finally, in the fiber optics fund, revenues decreased over last July by $16,000, expenses decreased by $93,000, this is due to decreased personnel expenses and decreased capital expenses. That is my report for the evening.
Okay, thank you. Anything to add, or any...
Was the decrease in personnel that was across the board, does that do to payroll periods, or what?
Payroll periods, yes.
Okay, any other questions, comments, or discussion on the financial report? Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
There any other business that needs to come before council this evening? Seeing none, chair will entertain a motion.
So move them.
So move for what?
To adjourn.
There you go.